It's 6:30. We have a forum. We'll call a planning board meeting to order. And first up for general information, Mr. Dwyer.
Okay, Mr. Iser was first off the block.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I submitted an A and R plan to you and Mr. Maximowski on Friday afternoon at 19 Roosevelt Street. It's something that we had, you guys had seen a plan before. It's the property where there was a legal lot and a not enough frontage for a second lot. And they were attempting to get some land from a neighbor who was a family member. And since that last plan got signed and it did not get recorded, they have been able to work out a deal with the butter to get the necessary 4.72 feet of frontage or whatever it is that they need. So hopefully, Mr. Dwyer can put the plan on the screen. And I can show you what I'm talking about.
Yeah, Mr. Dwyer just shared it this afternoon.
Okay, so there's the plan. So the last iteration of this had a legal lot where the house and the garage were. And then the lot to the left of that was, did not have adequate frontage. So it was labeled parcel whatever, I can't remember, and not a buildable lot. So as I said, the owners have been able to work something out with the butter to the north to get the 4.28 feet of frontage they need to have two 175 foot of frontage lots, the 150 foot box fits in both. There's more than enough area to satisfy the zoning. And the, what I have labeled as lot number two, if you look at that, you'll see there's two separate frontages, 170.72 plus the 4.28, which will be part of that parcel A, which is to be combined with the adjoining land to form the one undivided parcel. And I have a note on that lot that says 175 feet total frontage.
Yep. So which way was the, the, well, I guess the way they acquire the land from the neighbors because the garage is right on the line is?
Yeah, so that is pre-existing, Joe. And there, there's nothing we can do about that. And we're not, if I was, if I was acquiring land up there, I would ask that they try to make it a little bit farther away, but they're not willing to do that. They just want to give up the frontage.
So they're willing to give up the frontage, but the pre-existing non-conforming use was not part of the negotiation?
Correct.
Okay.
Like the shed and the garage are?
Yeah, they're very close, both of them.
Okay. Any other discussion on it?
I'm good with that.
Yeah. When you put this forward, Randy, I think I says, I thought I just signed this a couple of, about two weeks ago. That's why obviously you got the extra frontage. Then I'll make them two legal lots.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Hearing none, discussion here. Undertain a motion to approve?
So I'll make a motion to approve it. Right off in the A and R.
Sounds like someone's cleaning their grill.
We got a motion in a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes four zero with one abstention. You abstaining, Bill?
Yes, I'm abstaining.
And Bill abstains. Okay.
That's all I have for that. I'm gonna hang around for the town meeting articles.
Okay.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
I like your, your magenta ink on your stamp.
Thanks.
Harry Arbach is next.
Want to take the plan off, Bill?
Oh, yep. Yeah, Harry Arabak with Agnoli Sign, 732 Worthington Street in Springfield. I'm here on behalf of the owner of Friendly's at 455 Russell Street. And we did submit a plan. I guess, Mr. Dwyer, if you could help me out?
Yeah, it came in several parts here, so let me see what I can pull up.
As Mr. Dwyer does that, what has happened is the pylon sign that was existing has fallen over and has been damaged beyond repair, so it has to be replaced. And what we're proposing is, we can't use the existing foundation, so we're moving it back towards, towards the, not towards the building, but back away from Route 9, approximately five feet. And because, because we can't use existing foundation, that's why I'm here today to the planning board to, you know, review the proposal and you know, allow us to move that sign, if you will. The sign is the same size as it was, basically 80 by 80, maybe inches by 80 inches, double sided, illuminated. It'll be illuminated with LEDs. New pole, new cabinet, new foundation.
All right, bear with me for a minute here. This is opening different programs. Okay, I think I have everything sorted out. Uh, let's see if I can open multiples here.
Used to be a Mr. Hourback that worked at WFCR.
I haven't met him. You know, I'm sure we're related somehow.
Yeah.
I, the question I normally get asked is, am I related to Red?
Oh, yeah.
And I actually, I met him once. And this was at an exhibition game at the Coliseum in West Springfield. My father, I don't think I was five years old. My father said, go introduce yourself. It was halftime. So I went up to him and I said, my name is Harry Arabak. And he looked at me and goes, so? Kind of, kind of ruined me for going to meet a celebrity.
It's not, it's not a paternity suit. I was just saying hi.
Not a paternity, but you know, he was busy. I'll give him that. Didn't need some little, little kid like out of the blue.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm having trouble bringing up the pictures, but I did send them all around us. I'll try again. But let's take a look at, this is the basic sign.
This is, this is exactly, yeah, it's the basic sign. The graphics have changed because Friendly's graphics have changed. It used to say breakfast, lunch, dinner. Now it's lunch, dinner, takeout because of COVID. They've kind of changed their, their offerings, if you will. Exact same, everything's the same except for, again, we're asking for permission to move it away from Route 9. Just because we want to stay away from the foundation. And I'm saying approximately five feet only because, you know, dig safe will, will kind of ultimately prevail as to where we, where we need to be, but.
I don't think it's high enough that it shouldn't block any lines of sight.
Correct. It, it was 118 inches previously and it's going to be 118 again.
Is this internal or external illumination?
This is internal, as it was previously.
What are you thinking, Jim? Pre-existing, non-conforming use? Now that it's changed its location, it's no longer has that?
Yeah, it's, it's a real gray area there. I mean, you could, you could make an argument either way on it.
Yeah, it's.
I think by the fact that it was blown over.
Yeah, I mean, if they had taken it down and tried to move it to a different spot, I would say it's going to be external illumination, but it wasn't their fault that it came down. It was, if you want, an act of nature, for lack of any other comment. And you know, maybe it's not so bad. It's not, it's not a huge sign either. It's, it's, it's less than 64 square feet.
Yeah, actually about 44.4.
And I'm assuming the illumination level from within would be about the same. It's not going to light up the ton of ambers next door.
It will not. No, these LEDs are, you know, and it not only will not light up, you know, more, you know, the Lexan, the plastic diffuses the light. It's just a more efficient way of illuminating versus fluorescent bulbs. What used to be about like a 24, 24 watt versus 120.
I mean, the sign is only 44 square feet, Joe. Smidge over. So it's considerably under what is allowed.
I agree.
Okay. Who was, who?
Joe.
Oh, Joe. Okay. Do I have a second?
I'd second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, get that out of there. Andrew Ganotic was next.
He's, he's kind of here as an observer. Since, oh, Rob B would be next. I'll explain it to Andrew in a minute.
Okay, Rob B then.
I've got nothing right now. I'm just listening for the town meeting.
Okay. The Housing Production Plan Committee, Mark Dunn was the original, volunteered for it. He's found out he doesn't have time for it. Mike Sarzinski was going to be on it, but he said that he really doesn't have the interest to be on it. That leaves Billard, Joe is the other alternates. I know Bill has got on plenty of committees, so he probably has no time for this one. I'm not sure Joe is interested in being on this committee.
Do we have to have a member?
We're looking for two.
No, we do not have, we need, we need a fifth member, but it doesn't have to be one of us. If it's not going to be one of us, we could appoint a member at large. If we wanted to. So it'd be one planning board, one senior, one senior housing, two from the Housing and Economic, and one member, one general member of the town public.
How often do they meet?
It'll be twice a month, probably on Wednesdays from now till the end of the year.
I had the interest. I just didn't have the bandwidth.
Right. And I talked to the town clerk today, you know, we could certainly appoint a member of the, of what we call a bit large. And when we just can't appoint somebody, we actually got to advertise on our program right here. If anybody is interested, get a, get their name to the planning at Hadley MA.org. And then we can decide at the next meeting who would be. Andrew Ganotic has expressed an interest to be on this committee, and that's why he's here tonight. So.
We're going to think about it, and I can think about it for one more meeting?
No, we don't have time.
You gotta make the decision.
We're gonna, we're gonna make a decision that either you're going to be the member or somebody at large, and we'll appoint them at our next meeting because we got a meeting tomorrow night. We don't have time to start wasting time because this, this, this plan has to be complete by the end of December. And that's not going to, that only gives us about six and a half months or seven months to do everything.
There's a lot of data.
So we've got to move, we've got to.
Yeah.
We've got to hustle on it.
And if, in as much as there's someone that has interests.
Andrew's a recent grad of Hampshire College in, what is it, Architectural Studies, Andrew, but you've done some zoning stuff. You know, we got to get some new blood in here, and we appreciate your expressing some interest. I mean, I'm no spring chicken and I only speak for myself.
So.
So Jim, tell me again, so we still, we, we can't do an appointment tonight, but we can announce that we're
accepting.
Accepting interests, expressions of interest.
I was thinking about this and I asked the town clerk today, was in it for something else. And I said, she said, well, probably the way the selectmen do it is when they form a committee and they're looking for, let's say, members of the general public, they'll announce at their meeting. Don't have to do any real advertising, just announce at the meeting that they're looking for interested parties. Get a email or a letter to the planning board. And at our next meeting, which is in two weeks, we can choose a, choose a person.
Isn't there a meeting tomorrow night of the Housing Committee?
Yes.
But Andrew could appear there.
Anybody can, Andrew is free to, in fact, I would encourage Andrew to attend formally.
You, you're meeting on Election Day, Jimmy?
Pardon?
You're meeting on Election Day?
Tomorrow's not Election Day.
No, no, you said in two weeks.
Yes, we are meeting on Election Day.
The planning board is meeting in two weeks, but we can make an appointment. We're not, we can't hold a public hearing.
Okay.
Because we're going to make the vote tonight to change everything, and that's appointing a member. I'm not aware that that's a violation, right, Bill?
Yeah.
For, for what? Election Day?
Yeah.
No, that would not be a problem. The only thing we can't do is hold a public hearing on a variance or a special permit.
Okay. Okay. So is, what's the opinion of the committee? Are you just getting somebody, a jet from the general public to be a member of this, of the Housing Production Plan? Is that okay?
I think it's, it's fine. We're, we're the appointing authority, so.
Right, I know. I just, I want to make a motion to formally change our vote, that's all.
Yep. So I'll make a motion to solicit one additional community member and proceed with only one planning board member.
Motion a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Very good. And at 6:47, we can hold a public hearing. So Andrew, get, get a, just a brief email to the had, planning@hadleyMA.org that you're interested in being on that committee. Very good.
This is your beginning of public service, Andrew.
Thank you. Thank you for joining. Thank you.
Don't care a lot, aye.
My father would be proud of you.
25 years ago, somebody called me and said, would you run for Hampshire County Commissioner? And I've been involved with Heather Town Stuff every, every year. And that person was Linda Sanderson.
Okay, we'll open our public hearing for the zoning articles by reading the notice as it appeared in the Gazette. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a Zoom public hearing on Tuesday, May 3, 2022, beginning at 6:45 PM. Purpose of the hearing is to review the following proposed amendments to Hadley's own bylaw. One, amend section seven by adding a new section 7.10 regarding building inspector allowing permit signs on public property. Number two amendment, amend sections 1B and 28. And that is to allow energy storage systems as a standalone. And section amendment number three is to amend section six to clarify the special permit process and specify ZBA and planning board criteria for issuance and various requirements of each. The complete proposed text and amendments of the bylaw and map are available upon request by planning at HME or going to the town clerk during normal business hours. Published twice in the Gazette, April, April 18, excuse me, and 25th. And the first one is amend section seven. And that would basically allow the building inspector to permit signs on public property and to remove them when they're not in compliance or they shouldn't be there. Right, right now, he removes them, but this just formally gives him authority to do it by putting it into the bylaw. And it allows him to, will allow them where it's, which reasonable.
So the current bylaw specifies no private signs on public ways. The Select Board has from time to time allowed charities and various other organizations to erect a sign.
Right.
Although it's not specifically authorized in the bylaw. So this creates the, the window for the Select Board to be able to approve such signs without there being a zoning violation.
Right.
And it is, Town Council raised a question of First Amendment, and there was recently some case out of Boston where the city got its wrist slapped for refusing to hoist a Christian flag despite the fact that they had hoisted 275 other flags. But the zoning article is content neutral. It does say at the top that at, that the Select Board will set whatever criteria they want to approve the sign. And the building inspector is given a role after that happens. He has no, he has no say in what is authorized. Just once it is authorized, he gets involved to make sure that it is structurally sound. And as Jim said, it also explicitly gives him authority to remove signs that are not authorized. Such as all of those going out of business sale signs that tend to pop up every so often. And I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, every, every telephone pole on Route 47 had become an EMT course advertisement.
Yeah. And you see all these signs of we pay cash for houses, we buy houses, we buy junk cars. This simply gives him formal authority to remove all those anyways. I mean, he does now, but at least it's, this puts it in writing. So.
How does that deal with for sale signs on houses at the end of the street?
That, that's a bit of a gray area. I mean, if that's, I doubt that's going to be prohibited, just like political signs are going to, you cannot prohibit political sign. That's against, that's First Amendment. So, yeah, and that, that's a, that's an interesting one, Joe. I mean, that's up to the building inspector to to, to address. You know, typically for sale signs at the end of a street aren't up for a long period of time. They're up for, we don't, right now, with the housing market, some plans are only up there for a couple of days. So, but that'll be, that'll be up to the building inspector to decide if he wants to address that.
Speaking of, of those signs, though, I think it's about time for a certain sign to come down on Route 47 opposite Cummins Road. I don't think there are any houses left to sell.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's, there's one or two more, Bill.
Anyways, any other comments on the First Amendment's amend section seven?
Oh, I'll make a motion to recommend adoption.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next one is on amending the energy storage to allow the batteries. And I want to be perfectly honest with you on this one. I'm not crazy about the wording on this article. I think it could be a lot better, even though I drew it up. I think that after reading it and looking at it a few times, I think it could be worded much better.
Is that something we could amend after it's voted on or?
It, you try, the planning board typically has been against amending articles on town meeting floor because it has made very complex disasters in the past. People start asking question. It, it's, unless you're changing a word or something, but we're not talking a word. You're talking a lot of words.
And you know, if we wanted to amend it in the future, it has to come back to town meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we, we could, we could just be sitting on our vote here. We could just make a motion to pass over that part, that article.
Yeah, you know, we kind of rushed through this. We, we thought we were under some type of pressure. We really weren't. Town Council, as Bill's mentioned, has given us an opinion as to our current bylaw, and it doesn't allow it if you're not associated with a solar field. I think we should think about this a little more.
I, I'm, I'm in favor of passing over the one on the energy storage.
Is that something that PVPC could help us work on that?
Probably. I think we could ask Ken for some advice on that. At least if you get some other, some, other towns have similar bylaws, and we could take a look at a couple and see what they say.
I think on this, you really got to get some direction from the, the state because this apparently is part of their whole electricity program. And this is just piecemeal here and piecemeal there. There has to be some consistency, don't you think?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Usually they do come out with some direction, Mike, and some kind of a footprint for what we could utilize, but they have not. And I would, I would be in favor of passing over, and I would be in favor of giving our chairman the, who's the guy that wandered through the, with the lamp, Diogenes, that had the lamp looking for an honest man? Well, jeez, we found one tonight. He admitted.
Clearly never came from town.
He was not, he was not right.
It, it, I mean, reading over it and looking at other articles, other, the rest is on it. It just doesn't flow right, I'll be honest.
Okay. Okay. Do you hear a motion?
Yes, we should. I'll make a motion to pass, record to recommend passing over the energy storage article.
Second move. And Mike.
Any other discussion?
Mike seconded.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I think Tom Corbett's in favor.
Well, that's, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next one is the special permit section. I know Bill put a lot of effort into this one, making it clearer and making some words. So I'll let Bill speak to it a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It just provides a structure and much of it is a paraphrase of state law anyway. It's just that we haven't had that in our bylaw. So more clarity, a little cleaner explanation of what you have to do to get a special permit. And so, you know, just, just filling in something that wasn't there.
Okay, yeah. Any other comments on that one?
So move approval?
If not, okay, got a motion in a second?
I would, I would, I would make a motion to adopt it, to, we're recommending it, right?
Recommend.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Joe already made the motion, so I'll put you down as second.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay. Motion a second? Any, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, please.
Okay, can I ask a couple of questions regarding town meeting in these articles, please?
Sure.
Um, so Article 23, I will just ask you, Jimmy, to, to say, to say the planning board wants to pass it over. We'll get through that. The Article 24 is the signs. Are you going to speak to that, Jimmy?
Yes.
Okay. And then the, the special permit article, are you going to speak to that, Bill?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Then what I'm going to do is, once we get these articles started, I'm going to ask for reading the complete article so that everybody, and then you guys can just give a synopsis.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. Do you need to, from us or from the, from the whole, from the whole town meeting?
Well, I'm going to ask the whole town meeting. I'm sure they won't have a problem with it.
I doubt it, no.
If they do, then I'm leaving.
Okay.
All right, that's all I need for that right now. Thank you. If I have any other questions, I'll hit you up Thursday.
So I think we, Randy, we should have Jim specifically, on both articles, Jim will specifically say the planning board recommends.
Yes, yes.
So turn to him first, and then I'll do an explanation of it.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Okay. Um, okay. You good, Randy?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
Okay. Let's see, uh, we do have a, uh, invoice to pay for the Gazette for the Ja, no, June, June seventh public hearing for Psychowski's, uh, um, solar panels and for the change of fees to the planning board. And that invoice is for four hundred and seventy-four dollars and four cents. Motion to approve?
Make the motion.
Okay.
Do you have a second? Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Also, excuse me, as a reminder, um, our pay stubs for the first quarter are in the town hall mailbox, if you haven't already picked it up. And there is a Legion parade that is in with the, uh, information, and the Legion Parade is on Sunday, five, March, yeah, March, May twenty-ninth at two PM at the Legion, if anybody's interested in attending and marching.
Sunday, the day before Memorial Day.
Okay, um, Bill?
I, I don't.
I accidentally took your pay stub and opened it before I even realized it, when I opened it. So I put it in an envelope with all the information, um, that was also submitted with it. I just, it's in, it's in the town hall mail slot.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem. It's all public record anyway.
Yes, yes, now like it's a, now, we don't want either our big page, what each one makes.
Andrew, this is the, this is a big bucks position we hold here.
Yeah, I didn't see you on, on, on the highest paid state, you know.
But you looked, huh?
I was figuring it out the other day. That, let's see. Thirty-nine times six hundred and nine, nine, six hundred, even though I haven't made it for the whole time. I have been on a planning board for as long as I've been on it, which is thirty-nine years. And in those, that thirty-nine years, I have made a grand total of twenty-three thousand dollars.
Ooh.
Now, yeah, big bucks.
Have, have you added, uh, inflation on that?
No, that, that's my actual pay. So.
Well, I actually, I actually pay eighty dollars a year to be on this committee because the state ethics attorney told me I had to buy a separate phone if I was gonna be on this committee, cause my primary phone is provided by the state.
Really?
So.
How did that happen?
So talk, talk about getting blood for.
Well, uh, while, while we're at it, uh, obviously, as a solo practitioner, I set up my own pension plan and that, and for my staff as well. However, as you will notice on our pay stub, there is a, uh, a deduction for the state pension plan. You're not allowed to have two conflicting plans. So the IRS, uh, uh, called me and, and but there is a special exemption evidently, uh, for public service. And the other one was a school teacher in Hadley, too. So.
Does that mean we can't collect social security and the town thing, Joe?
I, they, they ask me every year if I'm, I'm still an active member of the board, and I have to respond, yes.
Oh, yeah, the Hampshire Council of Governments, it was lucrative. I mean, we weren't making thousands of dollars, but, you know, I s- I've got a hundred shares of McDonald's stock that I managed to buy with what I had in their, uh, Ora Plan or whatever it was called. But there, some of these people were making, uh, seven, eight hundred dollars a quarter that had committee, committee, uh, titles. But, you know, that's, that's old news. It's no longer around.
I know. What's, uh, two dollars and ninety-eight cents a quarter, something like that.
Well, clearly, that's why we're all in it for the bucks.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I pay four hundred and eighty a year for the phone, and I get paid four hundred, so.
Okay. Well, I think you can deduct the phone against that. You can deduct it, yeah. Deduct it against your income.
That's, that's a business.
Of course it is, of course it is.
Anyways. Do you have anything else, Mr. Dwyer?
I do not. Um, I've had a few calls from people who may be bringing things forward. But, uh, nothing, nothing really here now.
Okay.
The, the best information we got tonight is that, uh, you can go through Popeyes Drive-Thru. Thank you, Andrew.
Well, the electric bike, the electric bike store that Diane Kirby thing is supposed to have grand opening on Saturday. There's a sign out there in the yard I saw today.
I saw the purple paint.
So if anybody's interested in electric bicycles, there you go.
Ride your electric bike through the Popeyes, uh, drive thru.
Right, get a bike and ride, ride over to Popeyes and get a get a, some chicken. There you go, or vice versa. Um, I have nothing. Anybody else have anything?
I just.
Town meeting on Thursday. Reminder, town meeting on Thursday at, what's it, seven o'clock, Randy?
Seven o'clock.
At Hopkins?
Yes.
Yes, excuse me, it is at Hopkins in the gymnasium.
Okay.
And we're setting it up so that hopefully we can be as, uh, COVID-conscious as possible. Uh, I'm recommending people wear masks, but there's no mandate, so it's up to you, but, uh, I would prefer it. Uh, there's two air handlers in that building, in that room that I wasn't aware of. One in each diagonal corner, and they each suck air opposite of each other, so I think we're gonna have very good air circulation in there.
Okay. The only thing I would, I would ask that, uh, for the people that are speaking to take their masks off, because sometimes when people are speaking, then the, the words come out. If they're not crystal clear, they come out muffled.
Gotcha.
Good idea. I recommend masks is a good idea.
And, uh, our next, uh, meeting will be on Tuesday, the seventeenth, which is also the Hadley Election Day. So we certainly encourage everyone to get out for that. And, uh, the only thing I have down for our meeting will be Ken Komiya from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission.
So on the seventeenth, get out and vote for your candidate of choice. There are several contests on the min, on the, uh, oh, ballot. And vote as you see fit.
And then go to the planning board meeting. And then go to the planning board.
So that will actually be, uh, that will be an interesting one. I, I, uh, I think I will have to, well, we won't be taking any votes, so, uh, but if anybody comes in for any business, I guess I would have to abstain, because my term runs to the next election. But my next term would not start until I was sworn in, I wouldn't think, so.
Assuming we vote you in.
Well, we can't. You know, except for general information, and what we can, we can still pass general information article. We don't have any public hearings, so you're all set.
Yep, should be fine.
Yeah.
Um.
Who's gonna take notes, so?
Oh, I might, I might do that anyway.
Cause he can, his arm can be.
Pro bono?
Yeah.
If you're interested in writing up minutes of our meetings, uh, it'd be a great experience.
Don't scare him off, Mike.
All right, move where you're turning, Jim.
I just, wait, I just want to find if it's, if Tom has any questions.
Nope.
Good, all right.
Checking it out, thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn. We have a second? We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Meeting is history. Thank you. Thank you, John. And thank you, Randy.
Okay, see you Thursday night, guys.
Yeah.